Very non, when you want to come for council information items, proposed assessments. Greg?
Yeah, in your packet this evening, I also printed it out just in case you wanted to look at the hard copy of it. What we have is the, basically the draft assessment for the 2017 projects. It didn't include any names or any parcel IDs, but I wanted to draw your attention to a couple of the... Okay, the first one here that I'll point to is the 2016 rates. I'm glad I printed it out because it's not very clear on here. These are the rates that we would've assessed in the 2016 with the products there. You can see, you know, it ranges from $9,600, $7,500, $7,500, and it goes on throughout the pages. The column right next to it here, which is the proposed split, that is the 75% utilities, 75% street. So, we are, the city would pick up 65% of the utilities and then pick up 75% of the street construction costs. Jumping just to the other side of that column, we're looking at the per policy, which is 50%. Currently, what our policy says is we have a goal to assess 25% of the project to the properties on the left, 25% of the property, or to the project costs, the properties on the right, and the city would pick up the other 50%. As you can see, those costs right there are considerably more than what we would assess based on our 2016 rates, as well as the proposed splits. I also tried to look at, well, what if we just did a straight 65% city cost and 75% city cost? We can kind of see where those numbers come into play on the two right-hand columns. Historically, as I, you know, broke out these numbers here, and this gets along with the next item on the agenda, when oil prices started to go up dramatically, our street construction costs also went up dramatically. And we were trying to, you know, cover some of those street costs with our utility costs. And so now we're trying to get back to, you know, a proposed split in terms of with the streets and the utilities at a percentage rate. So, we're looking at 65% for the utilities that the city would pick up and 75% for the street component of it. And so I guess I just wanted to open up for discussion with the council here to see, you know, if this is the direction that we'd like to go and if there's a different way for split that you'd like to see before we move forward. Ideally, I'd like to have consensus tonight in terms of what splits because ultimately that's what we would show in our feasibility reports, which are scheduled to be at our next council meeting. You know, as you flip through, you can kind of compare the two rates with the 2016 ones and see how they compare. I will say, these are higher than our 2016 rates. The reason that we wanted to start high is because it's always my goal to estimate high at the beginning because I want to make sure we have enough funds to cover those costs. When the project comes in, and ideally if it comes in less than what we estimate, then, you know, the rates would also be lower in terms of the assessments to the property owners. So, you'll notice they are higher than the 2016, but that's intended so that we can back off if we need to. Any questions?
Now, Greg, these numbers that you have listed to the right here, like 2016 rates and the per policy, 50% city, 65, 75, those numbers that are there, is that what the city pays or the residents?
These would be the resident costs. So, the 2016, that's what we would've assessed, this particular resident, at our 2016 rates. If we were to look at what our policy says in terms of the goal, you know, it would be considerably more and those would be the rates for it. And then the 65% would be 65% of city's costs, the resident would pick up 35%. Historically, well, in 2015 and 2016, we were right around that 37% is what we assessed. And so that's where the 65% kind of came into play. And it seemed like the 65% and 75% split as far as utilities and the street, that seemed to be a nice fit in terms of where would match closely to our 2016 rates. So, it didn't offset, or didn't take a big jump, and it was comparable to what our residents paid in 14 as well as 15.
I hate to ask somebody a question that I haven't read them for the answer ahead of time, but any idea what similar cities, what their assessment rate is? You know, do we have any deal? What does Brainerd do? What does Sartell do? What's Sutcliffe do?
Historically, right around the $10,000 mark is where a total reconstruction cost would be at for a typical 80-foot wide lot. So, you know, you've got the sewer, the water, the storm sewer, and the street included in that. Now, I will say, City Little Falls does have wider streets than most communities, but we still try to stick into that $10,000 range. We don't like to go too much more than that because it does become a burden on our residents. And so, we try to get in that area. Now, when you're just looking at pavement costs, you know, in terms of the street and curb and gutter, and you're not doing the utilities, it obviously can be less than that. But that's comparable to what our 2016 rates were and what our...
So, any ideas though on percentages? Because I've heard where some communities charge a lot larger percentage to the resident than we do. So, even though ours is going up, our city share is going down. We're still getting more comparable to what a lot of other cities.
It really varies. I know like Baxter, 100% of the costs go to the residents. So, they don't even have a city component of it, it's 100% of the residents. We have to have, by state law, in order to sell bonds, we have to at least assess 20%. And so, we want to be above that, but yet we also have to be cognizant of the rest of the residents and the falls that, you know, some improvements will just benefit that property and other benefits will improve the entire city. That's why the 65, 75 split, because we recognize that, you know, three-quarters of the street probably going to be used by somebody other than the person that's right there.
Any other questions?
So, with it being a 65 and 75, are you going to determine that for next year based on this year's costs?
Nope. What we would do is, we can, you know, if somebody comes in and asks for how much would the assessments be on an 80-foot wide lot, we can explain to them, this is what the 2017 rates were and that it's a 65, 75 split, and then those prices would be determined based on actual bid prices and actual construction.
So, we determine what we give them?
That's correct, yes.
So, they only have a ballpark until then?
We have a ballpark until then, yeah. And I realize that's not ideally what we would like to do. I mean, it's nice to know budget-wise, this is how much it's going to cost. But we do have to go this route where we have that split in there and it's a percentage of the construction.
So, like last year when we had our bids a little earlier, we had the bids that benefits?
It benefits, yes. Yep, it benefits all parties then.
What are we trying to correct for? What are we trying to fix?
Right now, when we set our rates on January 1, whether or not the bids come in higher or lower, the residents don't get the benefit of, you know, a lower bid. If they come in higher, then obviously, we would talk to the council to see if they want to adjust those rates. Historically, we've kept them at or below what our preliminary assessments are at, but we're trying to share the risk, if you will, and share the benefit that if we bid the projects early and they come in less, then the residents as well as the city have a benefit too to those lower costs, lower construction costs.
That's what I just asked Jeremy because that's what we would give most of our complaints on.
Yep.
Is if the project comes in cheaper, but we have these standard rates set, and it's cheaper to us, but it's not cheaper to them.
True.
For the blush, I think that makes this better because I think it's more fair.
Yes. So, unless anybody has a huge objection to it, I'd like to include the 75, 65 split, the proposed splits here, in our 2017 projects so that those are the numbers that you can see when you read the reports and act on them potentially at your next meeting.
Anybody have issues? Not concerning this.
Okay, that's where we will go.
Sounds good, thank you. Policy 12, amend public improvement policy? In your packet?
I did include the policy 12 in case you wanted to read all of it. We are looking at making some modifications. I did speak with you guys last time regarding overlays and how we handle that in terms of maintenance. And so, in the packet, if you look on page nine of your packet, you'll see the revised language in there for overlays. Essentially, what we're looking at doing is saying in overlays and improved areas where there's curb and gutter, it will be assessed at the same ratio as street improvements as listed in item two above, which states in the section above that if it's got a 30-year design, if there are any improvements in that time, they will be prorated accordingly to account for that earlier improvement. So, that's one of the things I want to look at tonight and potentially update would be the overlay component of it.
Uh...
In one of these, you'd had a times for doing like fog sealing and it's all reg...
Yep. If you go in the packet, I'm trying to find the sheet here.
My question was, do we really, is our timeframe really longer than that? Because I looked around the Riverwood area, none of the stuff that was put in 14 years ago has had any of that.
You're right.
There's fallen in a couple of those, and I'm sure there's other areas in town that say...
True. Historically, before me, we didn't do any sort of pavement maintenance. It has been shown that for every dollar that you use in pavement maintenance, you waste $7 in reconstruction. So, you save $6 for every dollar you put in. We are trying to be more proactive in terms of our pavement maintenance, making our pavement last longer than what we have and seen. Part of that is seal coating, get the water out of the pavement as well as the subgrade. And so, we are working through town. If you look on the west side of town, we've done a good job in the southwest about getting that done. This year, we're looking at the northwest part of town. And so, as time goes on, we will be hitting these other areas, including Riverwood area, to do that. And so, that's the plan moving forward, is to do more of that pavement maintenance and that's what that schedule you looked at there was for.
I don't know, I just have a hard time doing the overlays. If we're not doing the maintenance on them and then we're going to whack them with the overlay, so unless we're going to come up with a schedule and get the ruins on path to be maintained, properly maintained, I'm just starting assessing for overlays or inlays or whatever items need to be done. I think we need to get a maintenance schedule and plan going. A lot of these are way past, that's been neglected for 30 years or 25 years. And I think it's just bad practice to come back and now we didn't maintain them the way we should maintain them, but now we're charging for an inlay to fix our mistake.
I'm looking at, foresee a problem with the difference in particular streets as well. I'm on Fifth Street Southeast, it's not traveled heavily, it's going to last a long time. Fourth, and I know it's accountable, but I'll still use it as an example. If we're going to do an overlay on that, well, it's a main thoroughfare through town, so why would we assess the residents that happen to live on that street?
Good Avenue Southeast is a pretty well-traveled city. Roads are going to be better comparison, especially in the neighborhood. Yeah, I think in our effort, we should try to get everything to the standard that we want it and create a policy moving forward. Is that achievable in our lifetime?
No.
Your lifetime's on the council, probably not. There's just, there's a lot to do, catch up on comprehensive projects not in the works at any point in time, so...
To give you an idea, we have roughly 100 miles worth of road. And, you know, looking at our schedule, typical pavement life is about 30 years. If you were to program that out, we should be reconstructing about three miles worth of road every single year just to keep it the same. We're doing about six blocks worth of reconstruction every year, so that equates to about half a mile. We're losing two and a half miles worth of road every single year that we don't do more. So, we'll never get to a point where we can get to this level of effort where we want to keep it the same. We just don't have the funds, but we're trying to make progress with preventative maintenance to get closer to that, but we're falling behind every single year, there's just no doubt about it.
What does that cost for a block, what you did over by, like through school?
We did about $190,000 worth of work last year, and I think we did 24 blocks worth?
Just from what I saw, the side entrance there, it was just there today. I think that turned out great as opposed to redoing something.
True, and that's some of the things that we want to do. We want to do more of those slurry seals as opposed to the overlays. But you have to get the pavement, you have to get on the pavement sooner in order to do that. Now, ironically, the west side, because it was reconstructed or constructed in the 70s, it's in a much better situation than the east side, which, you know, that was 30s and 40s when a lot of that stuff was put in. And so, we're able to maintain a lot more of that on the west side than on the east side. East side's going to be utilities are just that whole W to reconstruct. So, the reconstruction, you're going to see a lot of that on the east side unfortunately. The west side's going to be more pavement maintenance just because of the age of the underground utilities.
Well, unfortunately, there's only two ways to pay for it. That's theirs and that's theirs.
Right.
And, you know, so if we're going to have to try to maintain them, is it fair to make somebody over in Southwest 11th Street for Fifth Avenue the same amount that you get to people on Fifth Avenue? I would say not, or they may never use it. So, you know, it's used a neighbor, and I know that's condemnation, but I don't know how we're going to figure out a fair way. Well, interesting, what we can only do is so many at a time.
And historically, I mean, to give you an example, like over on Fifth Avenue, you're talking about much more used thoroughfare than say Fifth Avenue. Or Fifth Avenue is different than Fifth Street. We, when we assess the properties, we look at if it's residential versus say commercial. We do assess the commercial properties because they're the ones that use the thicker pavement and the, they have more volume going to their businesses. They'll get the assess for the commercial rate as opposed to the residential rate. We are looking at, for instance, Ninth Street coming up here at our next meeting. The individuals at our residential properties are assessed at the residential rate as opposed to the commercial rate because, you know, obviously, the school's going to have a lot more vehicles going to it than a single-family home on Ninth Street. And it's just not fair to those on Ninth Street to be able to pay for that bigger payment section that's warranted by the school. And so, we do look at that when we do include our assessments as well.
Another factor to that is that the part that the city is picking up is property tax levy-based and the school is paying property taxes, means the taxes. So, the only way to recoup anything for the school is through the assessments.
And the county gets used to them roads in order to invest this around into the schools, but it mean anything on that? Roads that are being worn out by blessing and...
No, we don't, we don't charge per vehicle or anything like that. We don't.
About seeing if we had designated bus routes, I mean, how many should be chipping in a little bit? It's their kids going there, not just the city kids.
Way of the way to benefit to the city. They have a school, they're down everything.
Street car, a lot of cars that's going to places like Co-Loons after, you know, so...
To me, that follows on their maintenance. We need to up our maintenance budget in our annual allotment that we're going to allow for street maintenance.
And that is an option, yes.
Instead of what, for $75,000 or $80,000 put in there for street maintenance?
No, this year, I think it was what, 200?
225.
225.
What it's been held past?
And prior to 14, it was $75,000.
We made a few strides in that, lowered it a little bit because of, we saw project costs come in lower than anticipated, but we're still $195,000.
What did pulling for do every street in the town in the year?
They're a much smaller town.
Was that, did you receive some kind of grant money or something?
They went through rural development, you know, because of their underground infrastructure, that's what necessitated it. And yes, it's my understanding they got a grant for someone, but they also did get a loan component of it as well as did the whole rural development works.
Most of those funds, that was my previous city, we did a project like that. It was comprehensive project, but we were one square mile with not nearly the size of the streets and that very old infrastructure of most of the...
We don't qualify for anything like that.
We qualified for USDA grant loans, but of the $18 million project, only 3 million of it was loan, or grant, I mean. So, it's a significant portion of that was loan dollars. And those are paid out. If it's USDA, they're paid out over 39 years. So, you can get longer financing than you can otherwise bonding yourself or even going through the state programs.
Well, if we're falling behind each year, we're going to have to catch up here.
Yeah, I think we're on the right track in raising the maintenance and keeping that maintenance budget up from what it was. I mean, we raised it 300% for just this year. And that'll go a long ways. That'll get us, you know, we'll certainly be seeing growth in maintained streets. It's the replacement of streets that are going to, are, we're never going to catch up on. But those are prioritized based on the utilities in the ground because you don't want to waste an opportunity. You don't want to, it's too costly just to tear up a street to replace a street for the sake of the street. You want to do the utilities while they're in the ground as well. So, we need to identify those areas and prioritize those activities along with the street maintenance. That's why when we bring these feasibility studies, you see the pays are reported along with the age and the condition of the utilities there so that we can know this is necessary, this is needed to be done. Because the sewer is bad, water's potentially bad, it may not even have curb and gutter. If it does, it's in really awful shape and the condition of the street is bad. If, you know, any of those four factors aren't bad, then it's not going to rank very high in prioritizing. And that's the expense of work. That's the one that's going to cost us what we, you know, was just under a million dollars last year. We accomplished seven blocks, eight blocks?
Seven blocks.
Seven blocks?
Yep.
So, I mean, the maintenance piece, that'll, and that'll give you a good look in the city. Things will start to look better and they'll perform better, but we're just, I don't think it's proven for us to attack street replacement unless it's also going to be alongside of utility replacement.
Correct.
And that comes at a much higher cost. And if we're balancing reducing debt with taking on debt to do these projects, we got to find the middle ground, so... So, that said, it's not easy for any of us. You know, the state's lack of funding in streets is $6 billion a year in there. So, that's, they know that, they agree to that. That was what everybody knew was the shortfall and they still can't find a, come up with a way to find the funds to do and pay up much more resources in terms of growing revenue than ours are going to come with property taxes and then a couple of sets. That's why we're lobbying in agreement to lobby for more state aid funding for our roads, especially the heavy private units. We can do more of these replacement projects as they're assessed necessary even without utility.
It's going to take time, but we're moving in the right direction and it's not going to happen.
So, this is included on your regular agenda. I don't know if you want to think about it a little bit more or add some suggestions into there in terms of how we afford it, but we do have it on our new business, item K, in terms of the update to the assessment policy.
Any other questions for Greg? On the budget discussions, John?
Am I connected? Or no, I have to disconnect yours?
Yep.
Well, in your packet, you've... In your packet, you should have, not this capital improvement plan, but I did mail that out to you as well. That's what we've utilized to base our decision-making on capital projects.
Tree and good, I'll see if that helps.
It should be, for council members, this information should be in your, in that folder. So, you should be able to open up these files yourself. But you'll notice on, I want to explain something with this equipment in funding source. So, or in funding source, if you see equipment, that means it's strictly from the equipment front. If there's additional things like NJPA, that's rebate money that we have, that's the other, other things that have been designated to out-finance these projects. So, not all of it's going to be coming from a transfer out from our budget into the equipment fund to pay for this. So, Open Gov is one piece that we talked about earlier in the year, implementing that onto the new website. This is the installation component, and then there is an ongoing maintenance component. That's also in the budget, so if you've seen the line item, that's why it's up there. So, the city hall, we have, of the administrator desk, all of the $5,000 was going to be coming from NJPA. So, flooring, this is one that we want to address over time. Apparently, the flooring situation in city hall is that there are a lot of cracks and unlevelness throughout most of the, especially in our administrative area. There's literally a hole in the floor that's big enough so that when we have change, it slips off the desk, it falls down into the basement, you wouldn't find it yet. It's, I mean, they're pretty significant in sizes and something seriously needs to be done to address some of these components, but we know it's not necessary to do it right now. So, we're looking at over a number of years of adding some funds to, into the equipment fund to help cover that. Now, this is just, we don't have any preliminary estimates, but this is what we intend to start building this one so that by the time we're ready to make that decision, we can do it. The security improvements, that's the component from the OSHA grant that we're also going to be looking at. This is the build grant fund projects that the police department has one as well as the city. So, sirens, the engineering, GPS equipment, pretty standard stuff. Library, some, nothing for 17 because the things that we wanted to include are going to be held into either getting done in 16 or push out to 18. I know the circulation desk was one of the things that they addressed. So, now in zoo, you see there's some things that are, components that are coming from different funds. So, and park improvement. So, we did have a reduction in a couple of items from when we had our budget informational session a month ago. One being that Maple Island James Green Bridge that was projected at being about $40,000. Now, we're down to $50,000. So, as we've developed some better pricing or looked at at least in what it is the project really needs to be or we can afford it to be for next year, that's where these adjustments. So, not a lot of these actually increased, but a few decreased. So, police squad, again, questioning for squad replacements. Some of the things did go up. I noticed Greg this morning that the shimmers, that the solar array was on the speed sign on...
Yep.
As I just got that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, some improvements there within the building, mostly the security ones are grant and then the ASA heat pop item was a reimbursement component. So, yeah, some of these are just our typical five, within our five-year plan items that we needed to do the street, the jet. One, it's in the embers, we purchased it, but we're paying it off. The jet, one, it's in the embers, we purchased it, but we're paying it off over time. Dump truck and pile sander, that's, you know, a couple of those things are, especially in fire equipment too, we budgeted for truck in one year, chassis in the other, or vice versa, you know, things like that. So we're trying to spread these costs out and make them reasonable, so it isn't always just one big budget, yet each year we can manage the costs over time. And then you'll see here, funding source wise, with the airport, a lot of that's either the match with the FAA funds or our state and local maintenance costs that we have, and even with the local costs. You know, we're splitting part of that with the county as well, so. So these are the, are costs relative to some of these projects. Golf course, golf carts is one of the items that we, you know, was bringing up for discussion, we're still working on that. Rich has got three quotes that he's looking at, he's looking at Easy Go, Club Car, Yamaha from three different vendors in the States. However, we typically budget, on a daily basis, budget about seven thousand years for those, for the improvements because the electric fleet needs battery replacements on a regular basis, so. That said, we do have some money that we can already dedicate through that resource, so. So that might be something that we might not have to make much of an adjustment to, if it is, if we do a five-year lease to own or even purchasing outright, we dedicate, we already have funds dedicated to cover some of those costs. Then stormwater, I know, and one thing I wanted to note was, we didn't have the rain gardens or that access road to the northeast pond as a, in the previous requested budget. So that was an add-on component to that, so. So it was that five thousand two fifty that you'll see in the budget, if we compare it to that situation. That's one of the rare, rare points where we have one that did more than what we presented earlier. So wastewater, with the emergency maintenance, we just wanted to ensure that there's a hundred thousand dollars in the fund, we're not gonna take out a hundred thousand dollars out of the wastewater budget every year, but we wanna make sure that that's there to pay for, you know, major breakdowns if we have it. So we do go and keep that equipment, we wanna account for it by ensuring that it's there within the wastewater improvement fund. Again, so center home rehab, that's our phase one project, Greg, right now, yeah, so that's what we started, so some, that won't all be a, you know, that's not a one nine, one point nine million dollar expense that we're gonna have in one year. That'll be a bonding expense, so we'll, you know, we'll spend all, we'll bond for the dollars, we'll have a project fund associated with that. When the project's done, that project fund will get rolled into a debt service fund, we'll be a fixed annual payment every year for whatever the timeframe is that on, the funds in existence. So that'll be moved to a, you know, a payment line, down the road when those projects are done. Okay? Now I'll open up my project presentation, I'm just works, alright. And this, the, this presentation is also in that folder if you wanna, so you don't have to turn it around for that, so. Here's the, what we're looking at for total expenditures for our budget from the requested is what we presented back in November. Administration is what we've, we've made some adjustments based on the things that came out of that meeting. And I do wanna point out that in the six hundred funds, the six one, two, three, four, and thirteen, these numbers with administration requests are getting higher. And part of the reason for that is that I'm accounting for the surplus money in those funds to be held in those funds, that if there is anything left over at the end of the year, that'll be transferred into the improvement fund for that account. So that we're building up that improvement fund as well if there is excess dollars. So a total budget is gonna be pretty similar. So, the general fund, looking at this, comparing a lot of them, you'll see a lot of things are pretty equal. Where there is a difference or significant difference, I tried to make a comment to as to why that is, a couple areas, things come down. One is we got better numbers on what those costs are gonna be, and, you know, we found some either counting errors on our part or double, we, one in library, for example, we had an improvement that we had budgeted for, but it, we included it in another resource. So it was actually counting it twice, so we corrected those errors. Where there's an increase, like with city attorney, that's in the, now we actually have the prosecution agreement, so we know what that fixed cost is. Another item, you'll notice significant decreases are gonna be in the public works and street, that's because we do, I did look at previous two histories and total time spent from those employees towards other projects. So we have, you know, street department employees that'll work on a street improvement project, so that, their time spent, excuse me. Their time spent on that project will actually be budgeted out towards that cost, so it's actually reflecting the true cost of that project, and it's not impacting our budget, we're not subsidizing something else. So we are, you know, making those adjustments, public works being a good example for engineering for those projects, the time they spend on doing that. So we actually looked at the time of those employees spent towards those other funds, calculated those out to see, over two-year period, we saw some pretty good consistencies in that, and tried to budget conservatively. You know, what we've seen in the previous two years and what we expect to see in the next year, where their time might be budgeted off to other projects. So that's where you'll see some of those significant differences come down in those costs. And again, another one for the public works is we did get some, a good response towards a feasibility study, and that Region Five through their comprehensive economic development plan included us as a fundable project. So when the grant applications come available, we'll be able to apply for grant funding for that, and we can very likely be able to get that included as a grant funded item. So we did have that twenty thousand dollars taken out from what we otherwise predicted in the public works. And then the bottom is the other, I'll show you a component of what that is on the next slide. So the other is actually a lot of what these gray bars are, and that's the transfer result that we have. So we have transfers out for equipment, that's, a lot of those components are coming from the capital improvement plan that you saw on, I previously presented. Street improvement, that's that twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand that we budgeted last year towards the, you know, the fog ceiling and additional maintenance costs, things that we're going to do. We saw that those projects that come in is as high as we anticipated, so in order to do about similar amount of work, we're budgeting a hundred and ninety-five thousand towards that. Airport operating is our, you know, it's our share of the cost that we have for operating the airport, and improvement is those projects that you saw on the previous list. Insurance, instead of having each individual department or line item cover the insurance costs, we have all the general fund insurance costs come out as one big transfer. So we, Lori does a great job in calculating what those individual insurance costs is and pools them all together, so. So instead of having an extra line, we just have one transfer out so that we can make the one big payment in all of those. Parks and Rec, we do have, it is a significant increase from the previous year, but it is down quite a bit from what we originally presented, showing some of those capital projects that we either from, could be reduced or pushed off that we'll totally need. Part of the component too in that increase is that we are actually gonna do more projects than what we previously had done, so. So that said, we reduced some things, but we didn't eliminate things, we either really cost less or we're gonna do, try to do more than what we've done in the past. And the transfer out to various is some fixed things that we have, fire equipment being one of them, you know, so it's just some other, the HBC being another. So it's other transfer result to either different funds or other requested things that we have on a annual basis, so it can come through that. So then below that, so, how our budget is made up, and the revenue that we need to cover the cost for these projects or the expenses and operations that we have. We have two major resources, either local government aid or property taxes, and we also have some other funding fees and fines and towards the general fund items. So, there's some designated levy items, some of those being the EDA, and that's the actual cost now, we only had an estimate at the time in November, so that came down a little bit. The Fire Relief Association, that we can make five thousand dollars contribution into their fund for that, and then parking goes into the parking improvement fund that we use to pay for projects like the joint, the county parking fund that we know, building this year. And then debt service, you'll see that that number is the same as the previous year. While that's the same, the total overall debt service has actually come down a little bit, we're just continuing to budget that amount so that we build up reserves so we can pay off our debt faster. So that we're not, we're not falling behind in taking on more debt than we otherwise had budgeted for or anticipated to budget for. So, while the number stays flat, the actual debt that we're issuing is going down, so we're not taking on new debt, and we're building up resource to pay off the old debt faster. You found into that?
No.
Okay, I'm on target. Don't wanna miss the beginning, still, still here into this, still figuring out. Alright, so then, the levy that we have, or what's made up to get to the levy. The revenue that we have that isn't levy oriented is, we can roughly, you know, conservatively estimate that that's gonna come in at about three point two million dollars. So in order to, so the levy component is the difference in what we have in expenses towards the money that we already have in designated, in dedicated revenues. So right now, with the expenses that we're presenting and the revenues that we anticipate coming in, our levy's gonna, the amount that we need to levy for it to cover that gap is one point nine, one million nine hundred and twelve thousand. So, now these are a lot easier. So when we, so when we actually send out the, you know, the truth and taxation statements that went out, people received a couple of weeks ago, that included our preliminary levy, which was at three point nine one million. So that's coming from the debt service funds, the EDA, the fire relief, the parking, you know, the library referendums included in there. So that's, that's all of those components divided by the market valuation, which is what the county's tax assessor assumes that the values of our properties are going to be worth and that they're gonna be taxed in. So they come up with what they call market valuation for a community, and then those market values are divided out to determine what the property tax rate is that we're gonna pay. So if our property levy that we need to raise is less than the market valuation, it'll be less than a hundred percent, it's more, it'll be more than a hundred percent. In the previous year, it was four point seven million, and this year it's four point eight nine three million. So while, so with that market valuation going up, even if we, even if we spent more money in our levy, the tax rates could stay the same. And that's what you'll actually see in comparison of, so for that, that expenses and that one point nine million dollars that we need to balance the budget for the general fund, we actually are gonna levy more dollars than we levied last year. But the tax rate will actually go down slightly, now, that's not gonna mean everybody's taxes are gonna go down or even stay the same. On that truth and taxation statement, if your property value went up, well then you're gonna see an increase, if it went down, you're gonna see a decrease, if it stayed the same, it's gonna be pretty much the same. So my home, that I got my taxation statement that is valued at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, it was last year and it is this year, it is moving, it was in twenty sixteen and it will be in twenty seventeen. So the taxes I paid to the city were a thousand dollars, one thousand seventy-three dollars. On the truth and taxation statement, there are gonna be eleven hundred and forty-two dollars, well, very likely, if nothing changes in what you guys, based on any changes, what they would be on this, at this tax levy is one thousand seventy-two three, so ninety-six cents less.
Do you hear?
On our preliminary levy, which is a lot higher than. Yes, so, yeah, so what we're, what we're increasing is three point seven six percent to the, to the property tax levy. So we're actually, you know, overall, not, without any changes, we're lowering it six point, almost six and a half percent from what the truth and taxation statement is, so. A fairer, fairer statement would be most people are gonna see about six and a half percent decline in what is on their treatment taxation.
And what I understood the council was saying is, you'd like to see it below five.
Four point nine nine was the, was the goal, so that's what it's having to say. So now I do wanna go into the other, touch on the other funds too, just to make sure that we're aware of what they do and how they're impacted. Some, you know, parks and rec, and the transfers that we make to operate that certainly impact the general fund as well, because most of the refunding that comes from that is a transfer in from the general fund. So HRA, that is a, that has its own, partly has a levy component, and also has funding coming from the rental housing inspections. We do plan on raising the rental housing inspection from ten dollars to fifteen dollars, and that's to help, one, offset the inspection that we're, we haven't, we could, we've got to the point now where we're. We've inspected every rental property, our current contractor has inspected every rental property, and we plan to continue doing that and having every property inspected every few years. One of the other components that came up in terms of discussion has been being more proactive about the property of light nuisance junk issues in town, and we are looking to adding that to a component of their, of that, of our rental housing inspector's contract. So that's what's included in the packet for the, with that, it is also an increase in the hours of service we're expecting from them, so it is an increase in that cost. And all that cost will come out of the HRA, which will still have funding to pay for, and so, and still have excess funding in there for future property acquisitions or housing redevelopment projects that they have or find. So it's not depletion of that budget, part of that rental housing cost, housing inspection increase is certainly covering the actual cost for doing the rental housing inspection component. Hopefully we wanna have that be more proactive, and that will take a little potential stress off of our law enforcement, which is after doing a lot of those. So Parks and Rec, again, that's the, you know, the area in gray is the components that are making up the Parks and Rec, zoo going up, the twenty thousand from their, of their requested, and the other, other aspects. So of the parks and playgrounds, a lot of those are, a lot of that increase is actually in just the capital projects that we're going to be doing, and even the, and it's even a decrease from what we originally presented, so try to bring that down. And then the airport, part of the, what we've seen is the cost for fuel across the board for everything, even in airline fuel is coming down. That said, the fuel sales at the airport are a component of revenue, so it is a little bit of a trade-off in terms of it costs us less to buy the fuel, but we don't get as much revenue in terms of selling the fuel. So that's, that's one where, it lowers the overall budget, but it doesn't actually, it may not help us in the break even or positive game. But all of these funds in the end are, will end up being balanced budget, any excess funds either go into improvement funds or we keep the, we balance it with the transfer from the general fund specifically for Parks and Rec. Okay, so on enterprise, uh, the areas that you see in green are revenue, um, the areas in beige are, are expense. And then the gray areas are just the components that are making up those expense. As I talked about a lot last year, um, specifically with creating the base fees and aligning the base fees so that they cover the, the expenses towards those funds or departments that they're supposed to, which are capital improvements, debt service, things that are operating related, um, we needed to really make sure that those base fees were in alignment for those, relative to those costs. So, you know, we did see the major increase in sewer, uh, going from five dollars and forty-five, forty-five cents. No, five thirty-five, five thirty-five and on the sewer charge to ten dollars. At that time, it was still presented that this is a stepped increase and, um, continue, we're continuing with that, uh, presentation today. We do need to continue on that stepped increase. Uh, the ten dollars was a great step in the right direction and applying it equitably towards apartments so that apartment units were not just paying one single base charge, they were paying based on units, just like they were for water. We made the steps in the right direction. If we do go to the fifteen dollars, we will be at the position where we will achieve a surplus in the wastewater fund moving forward next year. Uh, so for, for water, the way we modified that was to incorporate a multiplier effect so that larger users were paying a larger base charge. So that if you had a larger meter size, therefore you have more demand and, uh, accessibility to more water. You should therefore be paying more at the, um, cost monthly to pay for those consistent charges. Not looking at increasing the base number of thirteen twenty-five, leaving that alone, but do, we are modifying those larger user increases in the multiplier effect. So that was, that is part of that strategy moving forward and that is to help build and, and cover the cost for these ongoing replacements. The three phases at the water treatment plant specifically, uh, so that we have the funds available, um, so that we don't have to make dramatic rate increases to cover the new debt service when those projects are. Looking at just some modest, modest increases, uh, in, but keeping the very base one the same. Then for usage rates, uh, we did see operating costs being taken, stay pretty consistent, uh, between the two and even decrease a little bit in sewer. So, uh, I feel it's, um, that we are fine if we left the water and sewer rates, uh, usage rates the same. I think our, our major component, what we're trying to achieve, uh, in, in achieving, meaning getting the debt service in alignment with that, that base charge. I think increasing those is more important to, in my opinion, than, than it is in those utility, than it is in those, uh, usage rates. And the usage rates are adequately covering out the costs even worse. So on water, we're seeing a potential surplus of fifty-seven thousand, um, you know, so those, those rates are pretty low. Garbage recycling, uh, this will be our next, um, item of discussion afterwards too. We have met with the haulers, uh, and we did in the last utility bill up, sent a, um, a supplemental notice informing residents that they're, they should be anticipating a, um, an increase in that to affect, to take on the implementation of the carts. And from what we've seen, uh, after that, and I'll go into more depth later, but there is going to be an added cost to us. There is going to be the added revenue based on changing the rates to move to the carts, but there will be an added cost. One of the things that came up recently was a discussion potentially at creating a hybrid of that system. Where we could offer residents the opportunity to either basically opt out of getting a cart and stay with bags, or they can just receive the cart as. With doing that, we had met with the haulers, uh, to discuss with them, is this even financially feasible for you? What sort of rate structure are we going to have to, to do with that? And they did come back and say that, you know, as far as the cart rate, that that would be fine, uh, by implementing with the bags, uh, that there would be added costs, that we wouldn't be able to fulfill that, um, that same role, not with the, now that the, I guess counties' scale are going to be different, so you're going to have carts and bags mixed together. That the, the cost for the drive-by fee would have to go up as well as the cost for the, the bags themselves. Because there's just too much unknowns in what the, in implementing that, uh, in place. As well as how much, uh, conversion is going to, going to be offered. But this would be equitable in ensuring that those users that are very low, uh, less than a bag a week potentially, um, could pay less or certainly have, um, paid more of a, as they use it, uh, rate versus those users that each month that use between one and two bags each, um, utilizing the cart and receiving the cart.
John, I know you'll be discussing it more and probably bring this up, but even if we can go with the cans, those bags would have increased.
Yes.
So it's not, that's the reason.
Yes, so a lot of the, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from the people that have responded when that flyer went out was they're very low users. They don't, they don't utilize a lot of bags. They, less, they're, less than a bag a week, maybe one or two bags a month. And, um, you know, they're, they're concerned about the increase and what they, they saw in the letter was it's six fifty-six today and it's fourteen dollars in January, or whenever it's implemented, it won't be implemented in January, so they're probably not until the spring anyways. And they think it's a, it's costing them double. Well, it isn't because in your utility bill, the cost of the bags are not that at all. You come, you go to Coburn's by, you go to Harbor Street by and you come to City Hall and you buy. And at that, and the cost of purchasing that was a dollar forty-two. So if you had, if you used a bag a week, that was, it actually comes out costing you six dollars and fifteen cents a month, which I would say the average user in town probably uses a bag. Probably, I don't know if I'm average or whatever, but I'm using a bag. So if you take the six fifty-six plus the six fifteen, well, then you're over twelve dollars a month just in the cost of, of getting your garbage picked up through our organization. Which is actually a really good rate. Uh, comparable cities are in the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen dollars. If you're on a private contract, you're likely paying more than twenty dollars a month to get your garbage picked up. And even if you're, um, you know, I think, even if you're with one of the haulers that isn't and you have a bag system, they're charging you relative to that, above that month to just pull. So, you know, that said, there's more to it than what you, you just see in that rate, in that charge. Now, also, as part of that six fifty-six, the way the contract was, was designed is that the haulers would take the increase or the decrease of whatever the transportation CPI figure was for our area. Well, because of fuel costs going down, that transportation CPI cost went way down in the last two years. Actually, it was, I think it was a four percent in twenty fifteen, it was eight percent, over eight percent this year. So renegotiating that contract with six fifty-six was going to be absolutely impossible. The haulers were not going to accept that. Even if we just decided, we didn't, you know, take the carts out of the equation, we're going to stay with bags. We're just going to do everything status quo. We wouldn't have been six fifty-six on, on January one. We would have been something much more significant, at least ten, probably thirteen percent higher in terms of, of what that negotiation would have resulted in, in the rate. And the bag cost would have gone up as well. So, you know, comparing apples to apples is tough, uh, considering we can't firmly say what that price would have been if we would have, you know, kept the status quo. But we are going to be able to make a determination moving forward and we will be able to make a presentation to the customers and giving them honest numbers about this is what it's going to cost you to stay with bags, this is what it's going to cost you to acquire. It's up to you to decide. If you're going to use more, if you're more than two bag a week user, you're going to likely have to buy surplus bag now to, to, just because you're getting overfilled with your cart. So I think the haulers, um, as we've talked, are on board with, with doing that hybrid system as long as then the rates are, are. Just recently discussed with that. That said, in trying to budget for what that hybrid system might be, or even I could easily budget for the full cart implementation, I don't know what the turnover utilization rates can be. This, this number, this one, it's revenue in and revenue out there. It's, it's covering its costs as so long as we're, we're not subsidizing, we're not paying the haulers more than what we're recouping from the, from the residents through utility bills. So that, it's going to come up to be pretty good. Stormwater, very low. I mean, we, we have very low stormwater fee, uh, very small, uh, operational costs in that. We, we have one staff person that, that designates some time to doing that. Other staff do work in there, but really the budget for it is very, very small. It really does cover its expense. And while the surplus is zero, that's with balancing, transferring out some money towards those projects or paying for the, the jetting machine that we, we have in there too. So, so there really isn't a whole lot of leeway. We're just, we already planned to take out that surplus into the improvement fund. And then in golf course, uh, we do have a much better understanding now in the operational costs of the golf course. However, you know, I'd still say that that, that number's in flux. This year, a lot of our costs that we, we saw were in not knowing how much staff time to have. We had a significant number of, uh, unexpected high budget expenses. The freezer being one of them ended up costing us a few thousand dollars because it kept breaking down and we repaired, um, the loss of food that we had in one breakdown. The thing started to spoil. Uh, we had some unexpected cart expense, or maintenance expenses on, on cart. So really, we saw about fifteen grand extra expenses just in things breaking down this year. The other component in, in that big increase was in staff time. That said, we, Rich and I have had lots of discussions about this and a lot of planning moving forward in agreement that we're going to manage the staff time, that part of the goal when I was, you know, when I came on board and what we were talking about in terms of how we wanted this golf course to operate was some consistency in hours. There was a lot of comments before. Nobody knew when it was going to be open for lunch or nobody knew when it was going to, there'd be a chance to go out there for, for dinner or even go out there to play if anybody was going to be there to take a greenshoe. That effort was, was firmly made this year in making sure that there was staff time available so that we could be open for lunch every day and we could build a consistent network of our customers so that we'd have people coming in for lunch and, and spending money in the clubhouse. And we'd have people out there to take revenue for greenshoes when, when they came in. And improving the course and providing a better product is going to help us along the lines too, with making the investment in the sprayer. So now that we're actually spraying for something every year rather versus every other, and so we're, we're taking care of that problem and not spending any more money doing so. So these are, you know, these are investments that we're making in order to sustain operating costs where they are or lower than because we're, we can get some efficiencies. So knowing that, knowing what we spent, um, in having part-timers, part of that additional expense too is with the wage increases that we did have, uh, a component of those wage increases due to minimum wage law that we saw, uh, so that, that was a factor as well. That said, there is some, we would like to make some discussions in terms of how do we implement salary increases for those part-time employees that, that come back. We may have one that got hired right at the end of the last year or only worked maybe fifty hours this season, but they're, they're really more available next season. Are they really deserving of a full, a full staff increase, uh, in that salary? They only put in fifty hours in previous years, they barely get a fee. And that's not even a full pay period if they're a full-time employee. So, you know, looking at how, when you, how, how we can manage those and, and better, more fairly, uh, including that as well. So looking at what we have for, for costs related to the course next year, um, and managing that time more appropriately, more appropriately so that we know we can have consistent hours but not overstaff. We do need some additional, we will still need additional revenue in order to generate profit at the golf course. So what this budget has is ten percent increase in the membership fees in carts. So this is, your greenshoe is going to be ten percent higher, your membership cost is going to be ten percent higher, your cart rental fees are going to be ten percent higher, and the, um, trail fees would be ten percent higher, just ten percent across the board. And I believe that would generate enough revenue that if we can manage those costs specifically in the, in the part-time utilization, we can generate profit at the golf course.
How does that compare with the other golf courses?
I'd still say we're going to be competitive, uh, with those other golf courses. Now, we won't know what their rates are probably until the spring. Um, that's more typical, specific, especially with private courses. They're not going to, you know, they might not be announcing their rates in a, they're not going to be announcing their rates in a fee schedule in, in January like we are or even the next meeting if that's, that's the time that we do it. You know, they're, we're going to, they're going to wait until closer to the start of the season when the rates are going to go up.
So they can always react to it.
Yeah, so.
Usually they wait for us to add.
That said, I don't, frankly, I, I, I care because we need to be competitive to what those rates are. And the bill's landing is very close proximity to our course and a very similar product in terms of, of play. We're not going to compete with the classic Adkins or even, you know, the crazy point courses. They're not, we're not in that, we're not in that same level of play. We're, we're a different type of course. We're a member, regular, you know, more affordable, fee schedule driven, um, one. That said, what we did see when we implemented the, the local rate, resident rate, um, to give five percent discount to both memberships, we saw the same, exact same membership revenue that we did the year before. So we did see a slight increase in total memberships, or we had to have if we, you know, we effectively lowered the membership cost for a few people, um, but we saw the same revenue coming in. Well, the only way that happens is if you add more, more members, since we didn't raise the, the other membership costs for, for the non-employees. So, so that's a good, and hopefully we'll see additional increases in that even with the increase in costs. I don't think it was ever the assumption for us that even for Rich, it certainly wasn't the case, not coming into December of last year. He wasn't going to know what the potential was going to be, but now he does. So this isn't coming from Rich, this is coming from me. But this is what I feel then would be necessary in terms of consideration to make to generate enough revenue so that we can ensure that the golf course can operate well next year.
Long John, I've got a lot of comments on, um, the golf courses this past year. And it wasn't the fact that we gave a discount as much as it was operations and shape and things like that.
I do feel if we are providing better quality product for, for those people that, that will associate increase in that cost is, should be warranted. Should be understood that we're trying to make it in better form and providing more consistent hours in the clubhouse. Being one of them is going to, it's going to come at a, a cost. And I know just, just from what I've heard and spoken to about people, it was always tough in the past to, we'd see the, the cost for the operations going up or money spent on part-timers to turn around the clubhouse and tell the manager, no, you need to cut those hours, you need to put in more time as well. Well, the manager's getting burned out and not, you know, not being able to keep the doors open or lights.